Twenty-five, you'll stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Lord, we ask you to look at the homeless and sick and get them back in society as quickly as possible. We ask you to look at our first responders, our police, our fire, our EMTs and everybody else as they watch over and protect us on a 24/7. Also, those that are in the armed forces, especially from the Edgewood area from the standpoint, watch over and protect them as well. Tonight, what we do, we do for the good of the entire community and not for any one particular project or anyone's particular interest. And we do all of this in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome. How time has flown by. I have Belinda Nitschke with me this evening, our city clerk. I have Mr. Wickman, our city attorney, with us this evening. Welcome. Belinda, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Barlage?
Here.
Mr. Messmer?
Here.
Mr. Rule?
Here.
Mr. Shriver?
Here.
Mrs. Spears?
Here.
Dr. Spilly?
Here.
We do have a quorum this evening, and I'd like to welcome the council members as well. As we know, we've always got the slide on the agenda for the... Those that are not on the agenda would like to make a presentation, this would be the time to do it. If not, we'll just continue to go on if we don't have anybody.
I would just like...
Oh, you were talking about...
Well, I'm sorry.
No.
I was jumping ahead here.
No, Richard, go ahead. What do you want?
Just to find out if there's any other backstory on the sanitation line that was cut for the owner of the house that's right next to Enstale's new parking lot.
There's lawsuits that have been filed, should I give any backstory to that?
I don't... Have no knowledge of it. They're saving them the files.
I'll tell you what we know because it's public, I believe.
Right.
So, for everyone, just to catch up to what we're talking about, it's the house that is right next to what is now the school's property where they're putting the parking lot in, on this side of it. It's a newer-looking house that's in there. I think the history of it is, next door to the house that the school bought and tore down, that property, when it was built, had a septic tank system, and it pumped, grinded and pumped its sanitary waste across what was our property, across the road, and then behind the marathon is a tap-in for the sewer system, and it tapped into there and it connected to it. When the house was built beside it, it was a family member of the original house, and they said, "Hey, just tap into our septic system and it will pump it and take it across." We have no record of that line ever running across our property, the road, or tapping in. It was just put in back in the day when the house was built, and I don't know what was on the property or why they wouldn't know this, but it was allowed to run through it. When the school board demoed the house and then our property that we sold them, they found the line in the septic system and they took all of that out and disconnected everything, saw a pipe running over, did not know where that was coming from, so they cut it and tapped in and capped it. They cut it off and capped it, not knowing that the newer house next door was actually connected to it. So, the individual that just bought that house and is rehabbing or painting and getting it ready, don't have to rehab it, it's a nice house, all of a sudden realized he does not have... They, he and she, they do not have sanitary sewers connected to their property at all. They have asked the school board if they can run across their property and connect to where they originally were. The school board has denied that. They do not want private lines running through their property under their parking lot and originally... And eventually will be their entrance road because if something ever happens to it, they would have to tear that up, or they would have an easement sitting there and they couldn't build on it if they wanted to in the future. So, they've denied that. Sanitation District has told them there is a connection at the first house, behind that first house, right here, that they can run up the street and connect to that if they can do that, or they would have to go across the street between the two houses that are over there, one on the corner, Magnolia, and then the side, run through that, run through the other people's side yard, and then connect at the street on the lower level. Both of those options are extremely expensive, so I think now I'm not sure what they have decided to do or what action they're taking. So, I did hear there might be legal action they're taking against the school board, but I can't... I can't confirm that because we're not involved in that, so I don't know if that's happened or not. So, that's where it stands for that individual. Not a nice thing to buy a $500, $600,000 home and then find out you're not connected to the sewer system, and your only connection is 400 yards away down the street, and they're not even sure they can come down the street because I think on that side is some water lines and then also maybe a telecommunications line on that side as well, so we don't know what's going on.
Where's the house next to them connected?
It's connected to that. Yeah, so Sanitation District, the property owner, are all figuring out that. They will not let them have a septic system. It doesn't meet the qualifications for that, so there's not enough distance.
There's not enough for a leach field.
Yeah, there's not enough distance between the homes to have a septic system in the current regulation, so there has to be so much distance between houses to put it in. And if I was a neighbor, I wouldn't want a septic system in that backyard, right? No matter what you say, they still have some amount of odor at times. So, I feel sorry for the individual. Would not want to be in that position. I don't know what will happen, and I'm assuming that no one ever knew that that house was connected to the one beside it. It was a newer home, you would think they would have connected somewhere to the sewer system, but because they were family, they just allowed that connection to it. And I don't know who built the house. I've never heard that. I don't know historically who was the builder of that. Or if there was a house there, you all knew that before. Was that just a vacant lot, maybe, historically?
Yeah, it was a lot.
Just a lot, okay. So, that's the backstory of what we know.
Yeah. With the agenda, looking at the agenda, does anybody want to add anything to the agenda? Richard, we just went ahead and did it. That's all right.
Yeah, sorry.
No, that was good. Got it up and running. If not, I've got a presentation for July the 21st. The council minutes need to approve or make corrections to what we presented to you.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Jamie?
I'll second.
Joe? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Messmer?
Yes.
Mr. Barlage?
Yes.
Mr. Shriver?
Yes.
Mrs. Spears?
Yes.
Dr. Spilly?
Yes.
Mr. Thielen?
Yes.
Approval has been given for the July 21st council minutes. Tonight, we do have the mayor's report. I guess really the mayor to report is from the standpoint, you can see the sign that we have in front of the podium here from the standpoint of, we want to thank all those that participated in the different awards and the participations that they did and the contributions to the holes. It was a great outing from the standpoint of, we had a full crowd on last Friday, and I want to thank Belinda and I want to thank Michelle and Lucas and Brian and everyone else and Rick. A lot of things went on behind the scenes to get this started and to get it up and running and get everything in place. It takes time to do so, and of course, pleased on Kent County from the standpoint of Dave who were there at the golf course accommodating us for lunch and all the other amenities that he has set up for us, that it worked out very well. So, with that, and the funds, of course, go into the recreation, really goes into our general fund, but basically the profit we'll have on this will go into the Recreation Department from offset some of our costs of our newsletter as well as some of our costs to the concerts and from the standpoint of, even though Hatfield and St. Louis does contribute a lot, some to our concerts from the standpoint, it is costly to put on the cost of the concerts all summers. So, from that standpoint, that monetary unit will be put in place for that as well. So, again, and those that participated, there's some in the audience that participated as well and some on council that participated, thank you very much. It was an enjoyable day that we had to get together with everybody as well. I do have one thing from the standpoint of, I think you all got notices from the standpoint that we were shy, some employees, and we've kind of gained some employees, and we've gained two... One individual, Sodarius Barnes.
Sodarius.
Sodarius Barnes, for the Police Department, he came from Alabama. So, this could be interesting. He's going to be... The heat up here doesn't bother him at all. This is cool. He's at the end of the 90s and 100s, that's nothing. That's what they have down there wearing all their uniforms. He said, you know, he can't complain, but we'd like to welcome him as well. And then, of course, we have Eric Radliff to join the Fire Department, and we then also had Mike Leach join the Public Works as a specialist there, and he came from... Sharon?
He did work in Sharonville.
Sharonville.
Huron Marine.
And Huron Marine, yeah, so...
I'll add just a little bit to it.
Go ahead.
Sergeant Buchanan, if you want to add anything to the Sodarius or his background, and then plus we have another candidate that we are finalizing up to put onto the staff as well. So, the Police Department is shoring up. There are two spots that are open, so that's been really good. Sodarius told me his mom said, "You're going to have to buy a jacket." She lives in possibly Georgetown? Richmond, okay. And she said, "You're going to have to buy a coat, not a jacket, a real coat." So, he was kind of worried about like, "Yeah, we get a winter coat." But I will say, on the fireside, just to let you know, the action that you took during the budget talks and what we did for the fireside, when we went back out and advertised, we picked up about 15 candidates, and prior to that, we were getting three to five candidates. They had a host of candidates they interviewed that were very capable. We ended up hiring a lieutenant firefighter medic out of that that has a lot of experience, and we hired a medic out of it, and we still have candidates that if we needed to choose, we could pick some additional candidates to go. So, I just wanted to know your... The action that you took during the budget, it made a huge impact in the number of candidates that we received and the quality of those candidates that we got for the two positions that we had open. So, I want to thank you very much for that.
I've got a quick question, Mr. Dean, in that vein. The sergeant that we lost, he went to Ohio, is that correct? Did he go take a leadership position there, or was he making more money as a patrol officer in Ohio? So, as a sergeant here, he was making less money than he's going to make as a patrol officer over in Ohio? That's correct, okay. I went that on the record that...
It was for money.
It was for money, and that's why people are leaving Edgewood.
Well, he did move to Ohio last year for school reasons with his family, so it's a far less commute for him.
I don't know what department that is. Do you...
Anderson.
Anderson.
Yes.
Anderson, okay.
He left a good standing from the standpoint.
Oh, I was not trying to throw a shitty sheet on my...
Sergeant Rule, that is one of the things that we fight with now is the fact that, one, the retirement system in Kentucky for people coming into it is not close to what it is in Ohio. They still have the old style that we... That I'm a part of, right? So, we're competing against the fact that they have a quasi-401K plan now if they enter the retirement system here.
OKRS, yeah.
In CERS, right?
Oh, CERS.
And if you're in... And Anderson is a different animal in the fact that their budget numbers are probably three, four, five times what we have, staff-wise and all of that, but we're competing against a lot of those small communities now for candidates that are thinking, "Hey, I can get paid 10 grand more to be just a patrol officer versus a sergeant, and now I'm in a retirement system that isn't defined system that I worked 20 years and I could retire out of that system just like the old system." So, border communities, northern Kentucky, we struggle with that. Louisville struggles with it. Paducah struggled with it when you go to other states and they have those. So, that's a big fight when you're talking, and you know it, you lived it. So, it's a big issue in terms of how we recruit and everything, so...
Just wanted to bring attention to that, that we lost a leader to go take an individual contributor position, and he's getting paid more to do that.
No.
Thanks.
We've fought with it.
Preaching to the choir, I understand, Mr. Dean.
Yes, sir. We're trying to fix that. Would you like to comment, Sergeant Buchanan?
Well, you've got... Sergeant, you have the floor.
I believe that our future is very bright. Let's not leave off on a sad note here. But, yeah, we have Mr. Sodarius Barnes, a five-year veteran, coming from Alabama. He's amazing. He's what we need. He's the future. The future's bright, another young man. Also, Mr. Barnes wanted to be a police officer since he was a young child. This isn't a job for him. This is a calling. It's something he wants to do. I got to meet his little son last week. He came in and I asked him what he wants to do. Of course, he wants to be a policeman as well, so that's lovely. And I would like to, next council meeting, have him come in with his family like we did with all the new people and show them our support for him starting his new career. And then, we have another gentleman as well. He's new to policing, Mr. Austin Ford comes to us from Erlanger. He as well wanted to be a policeman since he was maybe in 10th grade. So, the future is very bright here in Edgewood. We have a lot of young talent coming through, and I wholeheartedly believe that we are moving in an excellent direction.
Well, tell them what the benefits are too from the standpoint, once they go to the school, they're committed to us for...
New officers coming in are on a five-year contract if they choose to stay in their profession, so they couldn't go to another agency, but I don't think we'll have that problem.
No.
Not at all. So, very exciting.
No, we appreciate it. Yeah, thank you very much.
You didn't pick up on that, Sergeant Buchanan, when he looks at a candidate, he looks really into that passion that they have for law enforcement, and he's very excited when we find some young talent that is excited to be a police officer because that's a hard thing nowadays, right?
Our castles here will be made of stone, not of sand. So, looking for...
Yep. So, we're in good hands.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Thank you very much. I guess, and then other changes that we have is Shama Lee Reddy, who was the director of PDS down in Covington, is now the city manager for the city of Covington. And Josh, was it Weis?
Weis.
Weis.
Weis. He's going to be the new director from standpoint. Josh, we're very familiarized with Josh. Josh has been out covering the territory as well, but Josh will be taking over, I think almost me.
I believe his parents live... Does he have... Rolf has it live here in Edgewood, too?
He used to. I don't know.
I think he has parents that live here, so great connection. Shama Lee was awesome, but now we've got someone that's got Edgewood roots, so we always like that.
So, we've had some changes and some increases, and we really appreciate it, and we appreciate those that work behind the scenes and make everything click and work. It's very appreciative as well. All I can say now is from the standpoint of, we are getting ready for the legislative sessions in Frankfurt. They are having their meetings at the present time. One of them is occupational license. That's going to be one of the topics they're going to be hitting on from the standpoint of trying to consolidate, have the state take that over, and present their opinions of why they want to do it, but from the standpoint, we're gearing up ourselves as well as why they shouldn't do it from the standpoint. We have a good system up here, but there are other systems that are elsewhere that are not so good, and those are the people that are making the fuss from the standpoint that they want to do something different. So, we're going to have a fight on our hands, I'm afraid, come January, February, and March, this longer session that's coming up to be. Those are... They are meeting down from the standpoint of both Bana and Denise, you know, have all said from the standpoint of, they're in their meetings at the present time and things are starting to transpire down in Frankfurt, so we'll keep you posted there as well. With that, I will jump into new business, which is the statewide emergency mutual aid agreement that we have.
I'm sure you read through all of that.
Yeah.
The gist of this is, we're entering in with... So, we have an agreement with the Kent County Emergency Management, and that allows cities to cities to work back and forth if there is an emergency, and then Kent County handles all of our FEMA requests, tracking dollars, doing all that. In light of all of the events that have happened in the state of Kentucky, one of the things that came forth was, we don't have an agreement to go help another community. So, let's say that we had an event that happened in Edgewood. Other communities throughout the state, when they sent... If they send help to come, which is... Most people try to do that if they can, communities do, they're not covered under a joint agreement where the state can file to get FEMA money to refund you for the resources that you send. You would have to do that on your own. So, we're kind of doing a push across the state to get everyone to sign a state emergency management agreement. That way, if something happened in Campbell County and we decided as a community, we would send our Public Works to go help them, or our police or fire to go help, we would be covered under that joint agreement, and they would take care of... We would give them all of our reports on what we've spent, time, effort, and then we would have an opportunity to get that back if it was declared a national disaster. So, that's the biggest thing that we're looking at for this. It's just... I will tell you, though, we are still under, if in any case, if we send any staff member to another community to help, and that's whether it's a fire, whether it's to go for a natural disaster, we still have liability and we still have workers' comp issues. So, if we send a Public Works crew to go help a community in Williamstown and they get injured while helping them, that's a workers' comp claim. So, as we make that decision, and we would not... The mayor and I would not make that decision without first consulting with council to say, "Hey, there's a community in need, this is the resources they're looking for. Would you... Would we agree as a group to send help or to provide aid?" Because of our size, it makes it very difficult. You can't give up firefighters, you can't give up police officers because of short shifts. If you're a larger community and you have it, you normally can, and it makes it tough when we only have... We have nine Public Works, General Services workers. It's very hard to give up four of them to go drive trucks to do something. So, normally, we don't do that, but I think when we had the... Was there a tornado in 2013 or 2012 that happened in southern Kent County? Like, we would send help to do that kind of stuff, but when you go way down in Kentucky or somewhere else in Kentucky, it might be a bigger discussion we have of what resources we can send. So, we're asking you to consider passing that and allowing the mayor to sign the statewide emergency management agreement.
So, a few questions, if I may, Mr. Deaner. This appears to be an annual agreement, a one-year, something that would become a norm that we renew each year.
That's correct.
And then, it says it usurps any existing agreements. I'm assuming that this would replace our local emergency agreements?
No, we would still keep our Kent County agreement in place, and you'll still adopt that as well on a regular basis.
So, those two can mutually exist?
We have zero agreements with the state right now, but I think the reason that it was put together that way, there are some communities that went ahead and adopted them real quick when they had the floods and the tornadoes so they could cooperate, and it would replace those agreements that are in place if they adopt the new agreement.
Yeah, I just wanted clarification that this, you know, wouldn't be our new solo agreement for everywhere in the state, including Erlanger, Fort Mitchell.
Yeah, so in Kent County, Kent County, Steve Hensley will still want us to have that agreement because he goes a little bit more in-depth of what he does in that agreement for us.
Okay. Thank you. I did read all of it.
Now, we have...
I don't know why you assumed I wouldn't read all of it. I did read all of it.
Let's just test it. And it takes me a long time to read it. I know you get through it real fast.
Fast reading.
Just in... Since we're talking about before you decide if you want to pass it or not, we were approved for the landslide that we had, so next week, I go to a meeting in Dry Ridge, local, they had more damage than we did during that, those rains, so we have a meeting in Dry Ridge to go through, start that paperwork for reimbursement of those expenses for the landslide that we have and the road that we have. That's a huge hit because that can... That saves us anywhere from $400,000 to $800,000 by the time that's done that we were going to have to pay to replace that ruin and fix the landslide stuff. Might take a little while for us to get it back. We may have to force the money out on the front end.
Sleepy Hollow?
No, it was...
Locusts.
Larkspur, Locust Hollow. Locust Hollow.
Locusts.
Yeah. Locust Hollow, right at the end, works with, so...
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve the statewide emergency management mutual aid and assistance agreement.
Jeff?
Second.
Rob? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Shriver?
Yes.
Mr. Thielen?
Yes.
Mr. Barlage?
Yes.
Mr. Messmer?
Yes.
Mr. Rule?
Yes.
Mrs. Spears?
Yes.
Dr. Spilly?
Yes.
Approval has been given for the statewide emergency mutual aid, and thank you very much for that from the standpoint. It does have... You know, things do happen, and we might as well have ourselves covered and help out the best we can, you know? Tonight, we have some up-and-coming events, and of course, Tuesday night is the summer concerts series in President's Park, and that always starts at 7:00 PM. We've got Marty Connor for tomorrow night, and we've got What About Jane? What About Jane? She's going to be here August the 12th, so everybody who wants to know everything about Jane, she'll be here August the 12th. And then, the closers, they'll be here on August the 19th, and then the rounding out will be Mamarcha Brady, and that would be August the 26th. So, it's coming to an end very quickly, but from the standpoint, you can find out about Jane and Brady, and you can go closers, and of course, we got tonight... Or tomorrow night with Connor. The sun and the moon night, that was the astronomy, Phil, that has been rescheduled again for August the 30th. It's got a lot of the people from the standpoint of, they've tried to set everything up, that we'd get a rain date, but they're looking so much forward to this, and from the standpoint, it's a great event, and a lot of folks do show up, and they're anticipating another good crowd for August the 30th, and that's looking at the stars, gazing at the stars. It's going to be at President's Park, and that's going to be from 7 until 9. Must be pre-registered from the standpoint, but at the same time, we can... We'll take as many as we can from that. It's very enjoyable, and the first one was a very great success, and we're looking forward to doing it, and so are they.
Couple of things.
Jeff?
My understanding is, school starts back up next week.
Yes.
Lucas is working on Social Media Blast to get out for the road construction, so we'll do our part. The school is supposedly sent... They're sending stuff out to everyone, so for the ones that don't get it from school, we'll try to hit it a couple of times just to warn, pre-warn people. Even if the traffic, if we weren't doing construction, I mean, it's just a couple of days of what everyone figures out the new patterns and what they have to do to school, so it'll get backed up pretty bad, so he's taking care of that. And then, the last thing is, I don't know if you all saw the two pages we have in the What's Happening in Kent County? You should have got that. We've done it the last two times, and we've supplemented a newsletter for that cost to put it into it. Do you all like that? Do you think that's a good look for us? Or I think it's $3,000 to do it, and it goes to 41017, like in the... I think it goes Crestview Hills, maybe Lakeside and us is the place in which it gets sent to. So, we get two pages, and they'll ask us again if we want to do it for probably a spring, winter, March one, yeah. So, looks very nice, kind of gives us an update to do what we want to do, so we eliminated one of the newsletters because of that, and then we send the link out as well so people can go to the site to see it, but it announces it, so I don't know what you thought when you saw it.
I thought it looked nice.[1701.03]
Yeah, it looks, they helped do all the layout and take care of it.
Is it a word of mouth agreement or a month by month? How's that done?
Just call on the phone and saying, "Hey, we have two pages." The first one was, "Hey, we're trying this new." We want to start with Edgewood and Crestview Hills to see if they're interesting, interested in taking up. So when you put a new page in the middle of the magazine, there's four actual pages. So Crestview Hill took two, we took two, and then when we came back in the fall, we thought it went really well in the spring, so we tried it in the fall. So before I run it back again one more time, I just kind of wondered if it was something you.
I was a bit naive, I thought it went to more than just 41017.
No, because they're going to try to sell it probably to Erlanger, Elsmer, to all the groups that kind of fit together and they can do those, break them out of those mailing groups. But it was just for our Crestview Hills, Lakeside and Edgewood.
Did you say you eliminated a mailing then?
Yeah, we did.
We did, yeah. We'll have another one coming up here in the next few weeks, which will bring us up from the standpoint of the other spooky Sunday that's coming, the Touch a Truck is coming from the standpoint. That will be coming out very shortly, but from the standpoint, we kind of took one and just kind of shoved it out.
Yeah, we skipped March and August, but we combined those months and the prior ones to kind of make up for it, but took away a whole one. So we sent out five instead of six a year.
Same dollar, you kind of hit a different group maybe, so newsletter, what's happening, social media stuff. It's kind of blending it up and making a good kind of blend of people that read different things and look at different things, so.
Did you get any calls about missing?
No.
No, surprisingly. I thought that back in March, I was like, people aren't going to like this, but.
Robkey noted that recycling volume of paper was a little bit lighter. Mr. Deaner, one thing I, you know, I've shared and advised people is anybody that lives east of Hinsdale to not even go Dudley. You know, we're going to have private transport for X number of days. You know, St. Elizabeth, what would be great is if St. Elizabeth could message internally to say, "Hey, don't go that way." You know, "We're going to drive down Dudley, turn on the Thomas More, go across and then come back up right here at this intersection, both in the morning and the afternoon." It's not necessarily the new traffic pattern, it's the fact that the light isn't timed.
Correct.
So even at 6:40 AM when, you know, all of Prestwick and everyone east of Thomas More Parkway is trying to get to St. Pius, it's just going to stack and it's going to be a mile back this way, a mile back this way, and then there'll be like one or two cars turn on a charter. So it's just going to be a fact of life for short term, but for us, we're just going to manage around and avoid it.
Right. And it will, the first week of Pius gets like that too for us. It's just, it'll back up forever until all the new students, parents figure out the pattern of drop offs and everything happens, so you, and it, because of the timing of everything, you put Pius, Saney and then Hinsdale, it is a good hour at least of somebody making congestion, right? So, yeah, I kind of hope that goes faster than.
Yeah, well, the challenge is the afternoon pickup, you can't leave early. So like everyone gets out at the same time, like there's nothing you can do. But in the morning, we can be sitting there at 6:35 waiting for the doors to open and avoid, you know, all the practice. The problem is usually the newer, there's a mix of newer, younger families and those that just tend to fall late on time all the time, that are going to leave their house at 6:50 thinking they'll be there by 7:00 and it's going to be 7:20, 7:25.
Correct.
So it's going to happen.
So we'll try to get it out, we'll send it over to Saney and ask them, and they will, they usually put a blast out from their HR department to everybody to let them know. And if they don't figure it out and they try it the first day, I bet the second day, they go, "Hey, I might want to take a different route to try to get here or leave earlier," right, so.
Well, they can leave only so early because they don't open the doors.
Yeah.
I got one more thing before we go, another event that the Children's Sensory Garden Committee is having an event at the park and it's called Explore Dinosaurs. And it's Sunday, August 31st from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Sensory Garden. And Lucas has the information, it's supposed to be on the marquee and he is supposed to be promoting it on social media.
Okay.
Once he's, he got it, he'll put it on as well as Facebook and Twitter.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we, Jeff, it could not be put in the newsletter, the newsletter is.
Oh, no.
Could have gone after that.
But I know it's going to be on the marquee and he's, just so everybody else knows.
But that will be something from the standpoint, we're going to congratulate St. Elizabeth from the standpoint being number one in the state. That's coming in the newsletter as well, but I'll also include that in the newsletter about the dinosaur that that did happen because it'll be past tense.
Sounds good.
It'll be after, you know. And we still, we still haven't finalized all of the things on the 4th of July parade and race from the standpoint. That'll be incorporated in that newsletter as well. So I'm kind of giving you a little pre-op from the standpoint of what that newsletter. My paragraphs are starting to form, you know, I'm going back and sleeping in my chair, but another.
Last thing I'll say is, if you happen to run into one of our school resource officers, just tell them thanks, they're doing an outstanding job. You know, when you really think about school resource officers, they're in contact in a day, I mean, in direct contact in a day with hundreds and hundreds of not, maybe just students, parents, the workforce that's at the school and you total the five that we have. I mean, they're, you're talking about a huge number that they are directly in contact with and not downplaying, but like an officer, right, a police officer doesn't even come close to that number of contacts in a day, right? So the value that that SRO makes for us is just outstanding. So if you come in contact with them, please tell them thank you for everything they do. They probably, they're away, they get it from, they're loved by the school, but the rest of the community has to understand they do a great, great job for us. And I think next week, they'll be back, right, or they haven't started soon, so now, but they do a great job, so.
I did have one question about that. Last time we met, we spoke and Chief Cronus mentioned getting ahead of the e-scooters or electric bikes through, and I really like this idea, an education kind of distribution via the SROs. I'm not sure where you guys have gone with that and it might have been just off the cuff, but I think that's something that we should be doing as opposed to punitive reactionary, you know, police officer bag kind of reaction that we've gotten in the past with other kind of.
I did read the notes from the last meeting, but I didn't, I guess I didn't, the two together you were saying for SROs to distribute that in the school.
Chief Cronus volunteered that as an option and I think it's a really good option is to, is to kind of, is proactively distribute what the rules are when you're riding e-scooter on the sidewalk so that they don't get going over or run someone else over.
Okay, we'll both try to remember that and ask, and ask Chief Cronus about that or.
Yeah, I think also, one of the, I think one of the biggest things, I'm sure this was talked about, that these scooters are very expensive, right? Four, five, $600. And the kids aren't finding them in the woods and riding them, right? So someone's purchasing them and those would probably be the parents. So I think the root is, is the parents, right? We've got hundreds of kids out on scooters, can't be raising them all, it's going to be, a lot of the impact needs to come from the parents, kind of teaching them those things. But I do like, like you said, the little cards that they can hand out in the school because directly, we can contact hundreds and hundreds of kids right there as opposed to, you know, a scooter cut off a person walking and we have one contact, now we have hundreds. That's an excellent idea.
And that's Chief Cronus, that was not me.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We'll get it, we're getting it rocking and rolling, thank you.
I'm finished.
You have comments? We have a short session. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Dr. Spilly and Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Those not in favor, like signs? Good night, thank you.